Do you want Belinda to come over?
I have chatted okay to that.
We are on TV.
Okay. Well, as you probably have known, or probably know, we've had some audio problems. So we're going to be conducting the meeting without having that fixed. We do meet the requirement of having a quorum, and it is, it still remains, it's an open meeting, even though the audio is not present. So I'm going to go ahead and go through the items on the agenda. We do have a quorum. As I mentioned, we have four people here. So the first question that would, well, I'll ask for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, the January meeting. So I'll make the motion to accept the minutes if I get a second.
Second.
John and Janice, we're having a vote to approve the meeting minutes from last time. So if you wish to vote yea, you can just do a thumbs up or whatever.
Yeah, raise your hand in response.
I have ayes from both of them.
Okay, before that, any questions, comments, changes? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay.
Do we need to do introductions?
Well, yeah.
John and Janice, and Belinda too, the meeting minutes are approved.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
This has been an awkward meeting to begin with, but. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the EALs. So again, I'll make the motion to accept the EALs. If I can get a second.
A second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, questions about the EALs?
John and Janice, the motion to approve the EALs is up. If you have any questions or concerns, now's the time to voice them. I see head shakes, looks like they're good to go.
Okay, so all in favor indicate by saying aye, or raising your hand.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is a treasurer's report, but as Truss and I talked about earlier, I'll just give you a summary because as, and John, really more for your sake than the others, because you weren't here at the time. Basically, the Library Board of Trustees was overseeing accounts, two accounts actually, previous contributions or grants, not grants, but gifts provided by individuals or organizations. This is prior to the foundation being in existence. And last year, the board agreed that we would transfer the funds from those accounts to the foundation, which makes a lot of sense. And so the process now is to transfer those funds as expeditiously as possible, which I can tell you from personal experience, not an easy thing to do. And I do thank you, John, for your involvement in that. So we hopefully at the next meeting, we can really provide an update on the status of that transition. So I'll move right into the Smurler report. And there are a couple of things about Smurler that I need to really bring to your attention. We did have our meeting and discussed a couple of issues that are relevant to the library systems. One is a corporate meeting. And again, I need to give you some background as to what that means. The way the bylaws for Smurler are set up, there is, and this is back in 1959, a corporation was established which named the, all the members of all three county systems as part of that corporation. So it's not solely the members of the Smurler Board, it's actually every member of every county board. And we meet once a year, and it's primarily to approve any changes that are significant, bylaw changes, introduction of new programs, things like that, that had been brought to the attention of the corporation to approve. And so, but we are required in really most bylaws and most, to meet at least once a year, which is what we're doing now. Typically, it's around this March timeframe. So all of the members of this board will receive a notice from Smurler explaining that we are having a corporate meeting and outlining some of the things we'll be looking for the corporation to approve, which one of the major ones is membership of the Smurler Board. And I thought there was one other thing, but basically then the corporation would approve, hopefully. Oh, the other thing I was trying to think of was we have, the state librarian will give a little presentation to the attendees. To be frank, it's not been well attended in the past, but certainly not to discourage anybody from attending it, but I'm hopeful that the participation will be higher. Secondly, we are, the next item, which is the agenda of the corporate meeting, which is to elect new members. And so, and again, I need to give you a little bit of background for that. As some of you know, or most of you know, that the state library is looking to change the laws, the state laws, relevant to library administration, but in particular about the regional boards. And this has frankly been an issue of confrontation and discussion, because primarily it would shift the responsibility to nominate from the boards, but the decision as to acceptance would be made by the state library. So you can understand why there was opposition. So the end result was there was a meeting, and those issues were discussed at length, and concessions were made. And now we recently received a new draft of the proposed law. One of the key issues now is that the new law states that each regional, and again, there are three regional offices in the state of Maryland, would have one trustee and one or two residents of the county. And their logic is that people who are not directly affiliated with the libraries would be more objective and impartial, because we've argued against that, because they come in without the knowledge of how the library system works. But I think frankly, this will likely go through. So it makes, basically, the current board consists of three members from each county system. Right now, we're down to one, well technically two, but I'll be coming off. And she is a non-member of, again, I hate to make this too extensive, but the current board makeup for Smurler, you can have two library members, a third library member if you like, or else you can nominate someone who is just part of the county, and which is what we do now. So the current individual who is on the Smurler Board for St. Mary's is a former member of this board, but she is a resident, so she qualifies as being that third member. She will continue, which means we have two vacancies, but I'm advocating we only fill one, because it makes no sense to nominate two individuals, and one of those individuals would have to come off within a year. And believe me, it takes a while to get up to speed on Smurler, because it's more technical. So I, we have one individual who stepped forward, Tom Russell, to serve on the Smurler Board. So I'm going to ask then the board to approve Tom Russell as the county representative on the Smurler Board. So I'll make the motion to approve Tom for the Smurler Board. If I get a second.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Janice and John, in case you didn't hear, we're calling for a vote for Tom Russell on our board to serve on the Smurler Board.
Okay, any questions, and hopefully I made it clear as to.
I'm a little confused, Jim. Excuse me. So you're on this board, and Tom is on this board, and then there is a third person who is a representative from the county, taking the third chair. Who is that?
Beth Roth.
Beth Roth, okay. And so you would be coming off at the end of this year.
Right.
And Tom's term would end.
Well, if he comes on, and in five years.
Five years, okay. And Beth?
I think she has another year to go, John, but she can be renominated. So it's, right now, the bylaws don't have the same restrictions we have here.
Uh huh.
So remember against that. We actually have one member from Calvert, been on quite a while.
So we could, it's an open-ended.
Yeah, it's open-ended.
Term of office.
Yeah, officially, you're right. It has to be renominated and re-chosen after five years, but yeah, it remained open-ended.
Okay, now, if the new suggestions from the state go through, does that disrupt the whole thing?
Well, again, it would if we had three members on there. And right now, it gets, it's, as we say, it gets a little complicated. Right now, Charles County has actually no members. They're going to nominate two individuals in this current cycle. Calvert has three members currently, but one's whose term is expiring. I don't know what he's going to do. But it doesn't, no, it won't disrupt Beth, or it won't change anything, but again, for the other libraries, it will, of course, because they're in a state of flux right now.
Okay, then my last question is, if there is going to be a meeting called "Of the Corporation," which is all the members of all the boards, where will they hold that that has enough room to do that?
Well, it'll be all be online.
All online?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no more questions.
Yeah, and again, it gets confusing, John, because the bylaws are imperfect. It doesn't require a lot of members to be there to represent the corporation, so it should be easy enough to get this all approved. With these new law changes, the corporation will go away, I believe. And I talked to the state librarian, I said, "You got to do it, because it doesn't make a lot of sense." So hopefully, this will be the last corporate meeting coming up, and then things will move a little bit smoother quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little bit involved, and I try to leave out some of the other things because Smurler is kind of a complex operation with unique situations. Okay, so I don't look good to conduct a vote. So all in favor of nominating Tom Russell for the Smurler Board, indicate by saying aye, or raising your hand.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Michael, you're up.
All right, well, thank you. The first thing we have on the agenda for me is.
Excuse me.
Hello?
Janice is signaling to be heard here.
Yes, Janice?
It's Janice. I missed the date of the corporate meeting.
She missed the date of the corporate meeting?
Yeah, it's.
Did he say?
The second Tuesday in March.
The second Tuesday in March, Janice.
Thank you.
And again, if there are any problems with that that come up, because it hasn't been formally established, but that's normally the date that the board meets, so they typically tack it on to a regular board meeting.
All right, well, moving on then, we have two HIP-HIP parays, and I don't have their certificates here, but we'll get these to the two folks who have been honored. The first is for Belinda. "The county budget submission was even more complex this year than normal. Many staff leavings and changes complicated factoring projected personnel costs, even as we sought to determine how we might wish to change salary structures to become more competitive. Belinda gave accurate numbers in response to careers about many different scenarios and smooth, the accurate completion of this vital annual task. Thank you, Belinda." And for Amy Ford. "Amy pursued a national competitive grant to bring an informative children's program to Lexington Park and coordinated employee rollout effectively. Thinking Money for Kids was a multimedia experience for children's age seven through 11, as well as their parents, caregivers, and educators. The interactive exhibit used games, activities, and a fun storyline to help children understand what money is, its function in society, money choices, and money values such as fairness, responsibility, charitableness, thereby enhancing financial literacy. Thank you, Amy, for your work on that." Go ahead and take a look at the budget. And with 62% of the year gone, you'll see that we are, generally speaking, either right on track or under the amount. Personnel, which is of course our largest expense, is nowhere at really 62%. The closest would be the OPEB, and that's pay-go amounts, and the Lexi Health Insurance at 61%, and the Admin Health Insurance at 60%, but everywhere else, we're not even close to that figure. And that, again, is going to be due to vacancies, although fortunately, those seem to be, to a certain extent, slowing. We do have Lexi's water, sewer, and trash, and Hall's telephone at above the sort of normal amount, but the cash dollars are not particularly significant there. And we should easily be able to absorb any overrun in those particular areas. Contracts are still over, and the memberships are at 87%, but those are front-loaded. A lot of them have already been done for the entire year and won't be due again until next year. So we have spent quite a bit of money on IT this year so far. We had network problems, and we're addressing those. The Friends of the Library contributed money to us in December, and we're using a hefty chunk of that $40,000 for IT upgrades as well. The rest will go to keeping the hula service, hoopla service running. So those are why the IT amounts are higher than they typically might be at this time. The good news is that the expenses seem to have caught the network up, and we're not seeing the crashes that we were seeing. Couple days in a row, we were having them, where there were outages. So thanks to Robert and his team for getting those under control. Any questions about any of the budgeted amounts?
Michael, I have a couple of questions, if I may. This document is through, what, the end of January?
It is through this week, last week, basically.
Oh, last week?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that answers my first question. On page two of six, in the top box, where we have dollars dedicated to landscaping, but nothing spent in Lexington and Park, and nothing, no balance over there in Charlotte Hall. Do we do the landscaping because we're, I mean, it's a county building, why do we have it in the budget?
Because there are portions of it that the county has put to Lexington Park and to Charlotte Hall. We pay extra for some tree trimming and some mulching that the county doesn't do.
Okay, all right. So does that tend, in the case of Lexington Park, does that tend to happen in the spring, since we haven't spent any of that money?
Typically, there's some in the fall, and there's some in the spring. If we haven't spent any yet, then I'm sure we're going to have a catch-up on it.
Okay, and then looking down there at the hall, which is the second one up from the bottom, budgeted 2,500, balance not showing anything. Shouldn't that be 2,500?
Yeah, I'm sure that there's just a, well, it's the, there's an error in the formula there, and it just needs to have that column equal what happens. Probably what will happen is it will automatically fill in once we have anything in spent to date, but we can have that checked.
Okay. In the next box down, where we have office supplies budgeted for 20,000, and we've only spent 2%, is there some pending purchase this late in the year that is still anticipated?
Belinda is here, so I'm going to throw the question over to her. I think we've spent more than that in office supplies.
Okay. All righty. Looking down on the next page, three of six, we have some money budgeted for vehicle maintenance. Is that periodic, like an oil changes do and that kind of stuff, or what?
Yes, we recently had the oil change in the van, and the windshield wipers were replaced. So it's that kind of really basic stuff. The van doesn't get a lot of miles on it. The issue, of course, is, is that it's 10 years old or nine years old, and although it has only about 50,000 miles on it, one can expect tires to have to happen and brakes to have to happen probably before too long. So we budget for that just in case.
Okay. And on page four of six at the top, virtual services contracts, was that what you were referencing in your opening remarks?
Virtual services contracts.
Top of four of six.
Yeah, no, I see. I haven't made reference to that amount. That is separate from IT. That is website and things related to that sort of thing.
Okay. And then on page five of six, the bottom line in the box, investments budgeted 2,500, we still have 2,500 to go. What would have been the investments that caused that box to populate?
That's income, and we don't really tend to know that until, frankly, until we see the audit. But we get, you know, statements from the bank, and we're, it's really more not any actual investments like the OPEB. This is more like what comes in on the savings account. And frankly, $2,500 is, we never see anything like that. It's usually $150, $160 a year.
And lastly, on page six of six, mobile library grant in the top column, so we spent to date $158,000 and change, percentage spent zero. I think there's a fly in the ointment there, too.
Yeah, we just need to fix that. And obviously, you can see with the balance at 91,000, it's probably closer to about 70%.
I think that same flaw shows up in the box below, mobile library grant, percent collected, zero.
Yes, so just have to.
Two glitches on that page.
Yeah, you have to get that, that formula to balance out properly. And just a quick update on the mobile library. It's supposed to start construction in April. With any luck, it will move on, and as it does, it's being built just the other side of the, the bridge across the Chesapeake at Annapolis in Kent County, just on the other side. So if anybody would like to go see it as it starts to come together, it'd probably be an interesting field trip. Takes about an hour and a half to get there, hour and 45 minutes. So as that comes together, if anybody wants to go up and see it, I will arrange for the library van to take you.
Do we have an update on contributions that were directed toward that project?
I do not have that for you. The, we tend to give that when the, at our foundation meetings, when the treasurer's there. So far this year, if I'm remembering right, we've just got another check sitting there that I haven't deposited yet. We're probably looking at about $4,000 so far, if I'm remembering correctly, on what's come in on that, on that solicitation of funds.
All right, thank you.
My suggestion, by the way, since there are a number, but a few errors in that report, is maybe just go back and look at the entire report, and look at all the components before we look and present this next time.
So with regard to this one.
And the numbers spent are accurate for the most part. So as I say, we're within budget, and I'm concerned about the personnel budget, but I'm hoping that we're going to, by the end of the year, get it back up to where it should be. We will just have to see about that.
I have one more question about the budget.
Sure.
Is the recent gift from the Friends reflected here?
It is not. We have not actually received the check yet. The people who can sign checks for the Friends are out of town for the winter, so we will be, we will be getting that check. And of course, as always, the Friends are incredibly generous, and we thank them for their, for their work. The Friends book sale is coming up. With any luck, that's going to be as big as it always has been. A couple of pandemic notes for you. As of this past Friday, the county transmission rate remains high, but it is slowing. So the county no longer has its mask mandate for its buildings in place, and we therefore, at the library, have also removed the mask mandate. We continue to ask the public to please consider masking. We try to make it as safe a space as we possibly can, but it is a public space, and there's no guarantee that one might not have a transmission there. So far, as far as we know, there have been no in-library transmissions. We are still having some employee breakthrough cases. These are people who are vaccinated, but in a family situation, it would seem that the Omicron variant is a little sneaky. It is not as strong, especially among people who are vaccinated, in terms of its effects, although the people we have had it tell me that you really don't want it. But we have had a few people, nevertheless vaccinated, still become positive for COVID. So we are continuing to have our staff mask. And when they have symptoms, we ask that they quarantine for the appropriate amount of time and get negative tests before coming back. We are partnering with the health department, and so far, we've given over 60,000 K and 95 masks away. We also gave away over 5,000 of the test kits. The test kits went so fast that the county was not able to stock all three libraries, and so those are in abeyance. Perhaps sometime in the future, they'll go back to it, when demand for them might not be quite so high, and continue to distribute those at the library. But those moved to a central location, because it was easier for the health department to stock there. The big effect this has primarily is on our programming. And I know you've been hearing this for a while, because last May, we were talking about having summer programming in person, and then the Delta variant happened and lasted for months and months and months. And we were talking in October about in-person programming in January, and then the Delta variant came along. So at this point, and I'm going to knock on that good old wood here, our adult and teen programs. A number of adult programs we have discovered work extremely well virtually, and we're going to continue with virtual programming for author visits, among other things, for example. But we'll begin some in-person programming for adults and teens in March, ages five through 12, which are eligible for the vaccination. We're looking at April. Birth through four, they're really young, and so far, not eligible for vaccinations yet. We're hoping for June and the start of summer reading program. Obviously, we need to wait and see how that's going. While very young people who have COVID have, generally speaking, not been as particularly ill as some older people might have been, but there have been people at a very young age who have died from COVID. So we want to take every precaution and make sure we're being safe. We are having some outside storytime events in late March through May. We're having some onsite at the libraries, at the Piney Point Lighthouse and Museum, at Historic Soderly, at Greenwell State Park, at Historic St. Mary's City, and at the Patuxent Naval Air Station Museum. So we have programs outside as rather allows, social distancing in effect, try to, you know, keep the kids from congregating too much, and getting our storytime presenters back in shape for that in-person story timing taking place, as we're hoping, in June. Stop for any questions on that one.
Mr. Chairman, before we get too far into the agenda, did we need to go back and approve the budget?
No, no, that's. No, no, that's, it's just a presentation. It's not a, it's not for approval.
Subject to the corrections.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's, the, probably the next time you're going to be approving a budget will be in June, just the final budget for the fiscal year upcoming. This Saturday is the Historic Black Colleges and Universities College Fair. We are partnering with the NAACP on that. We are providing the Zoom in part. So a number of library staff will be sort of staffing a library table and helping out with that. So we're looking forward to that. It's too bad that it has to be virtual. When we go in person, it's just a heartwarming thing to see because students come and they meet with the college representatives right then and there, and many cases walk away with the college acceptance and even financial aid. And it just makes you feel great to see that. So, but that should, with any luck, happen in this virtual meeting. And so we're looking forward to seeing how that goes.
As part of the library's role there, are we promoting internship opportunities for the students?
We might very well do that. And we will have at least one intern this year. And often, as we've talked with you before, our interns go on to, in some cases, become full-time employees of St. Mary's County Library. So it's a great pipeline for us, great learning opportunity for them.
Good.
Smurla has a little over $20,000 in a grant that it got from the state as part of the ARPA funds to work on a diversity and equity project. And the original use for it was going to be a collection assessment, looking at our collections for the three library systems to see that they are representing all points of view in, in the three counties and promoting equity and diversity. And so because of the funding discrepancies, Charles and Calvert have already done that. So there's two things that are a consideration for this funds and, and because they will involve St. Mary's County, I just bring them to your attention. One will be to pay for those and Smurla will reimburse Calvert and Charles. And then we at St. Mary's would undertake it. It's done through Ingram, our vendor. It's automated, so it doesn't take up much in terms of the staff work. Another possibility is going to be an author visit. And obviously, for that amount of money, we're talking somebody with national recognition. So we've thrown out several names and we're starting to investigate the feasibility of this. But first, Ashley, the director at Smurla, has to go back to the state and see if that would be considered an acceptable use of the funding. But what we would hope for, if that comes through, would be just a community conversation where we could begin to talk about these issues as we face them in the tri-county area. Perhaps somewhat similar to the, the thing we had last year when we had the panel of doctors who were African-American and worked with the college on that one. So we'll just see which of these two come together. Either is, I think, wonderful for St. Mary's County. And we hope that we'll be able to use the grant funding in one of those two ways. I don't think the wording for Dr. Bridget's citation, and this is my fault, made it into your packet. But we passed a couple of drafts by earlier and Laura just took those drafts and kind of combined them. And the result is a very gracious and I'll even call it loving citation for Dr. Bridget. Tomorrow is going to be kind of a busy day here at 8:30, and it's open to the public. There'll be a reception for Dr. Bridget outside in the lobby here at 8:30 to 9:00. We are scheduled to meet with either Senator Bailey or his, his representative, his staffer at 8:30, so I'll be zooming in on phone. Come in here, we'll do that presentation. And then we'll also tomorrow have the presentation to the, the biannual presentation of the county commissioners on what's happening with the library. And you saw in your packet the slides that I'm using for that. It's just a really general overview, but I do intend to talk about the next item on our agenda, which is our state funding. You see the word "cut" is in quotation marks. It's a very complicated situation. In 2020, in that legislative session, a bill was passed to have Maryland libraries go fine free for people below the age of 18. And funding was attached to that. The governor vetoed that bill. Now, he had nothing against the bill and is a strong supporter of libraries and of literacy in the state. But as you recall, that was the first year of COVID. The session was shortened and because of the economic uncertainty, he was vetoing any bill that would have cost additional funds for the year. One of the first things that happened in the 2021 session was that they overrode that veto. And what that meant was that, however, the funding that was to support that would not appear this year in our budget this year. It was supposed to appear starting in July of next year. But several changes, and I copied for you that very complicated formula, which, for some reason that nobody, even people involved in the state for years, can explain to me, includes railroad mileage. Is this commuter mileage? Are you a more affluent, you know, what if you've got more railroad tracks factors into your state budget? In any case, St. Mary's County rose in its relative wealth compared to some other counties. And the state, money is doled out based on not only population, but all these complicated factors, including the relative wealth of the counties. So our population grew by about 300 people from last year to the year that they're factoring. But the wealth grew so much that when I looked at the figures, it was a little disappointing. We, instead of getting a raise to cover the fine free, which we had already gone pretty much before the state even mandated that, we are seeing a funding cut from the state of about $6,000. It's not a lot, but typically, we've been seeing about another 18. Couple of years ago, it was as much as 30,000 additional. And obviously, that's a very nice thing to have, a little bit of money on hand rather than a cut. There are several bills under consideration in Annapolis, and we'll be reviewing those with our senator and our delegates, meeting with a couple of our delegates or their aides on Thursday. And just talk about what those bills are. One of them would redress that cut we're getting this year. It's not going to give us money, but it might get us back up to the original funded amount that we had the prior year, the year we're in now. Then it would, over the next five years, raise the per capita amount that Maryland libraries get from the state each year. It's in place not only for public libraries, but all for the regional libraries and for the state regional life source center. So we're hoping that one will get support. There's a bill for one of our counties. It's Garrett County, which is out far west. They have never been able to take advantage of the state capital grant program because they have a 50% match. Any amount that the state puts in in capital funds, they have to match 50%. And the county simply has no money for it. So what we're hoping to do with that bill is to lower their percentage down to 10%, which is a minimum that a couple of other counties, in fact, have, so that their county, if they put up 10%, could get a 90% grant. The libraries there are in desperate need of renovations. So we are hoping that that bill will also get some support. There's a bill we're somewhat concerned about and asking that, we hope, frankly, it won't get out of committee, but hoping that if it manages to do so, that it will get a negative vote. And that is to make the catalogs of school libraries throughout the state public. And we don't mind that at all. The issue is, is that for parents especially, they're already public. They don't need an additional bill. And some of the language attached to that bill make it kind of clear that, they talk about reviewing titles and other things. We're concerned that this is a wedge issue to try to start looking at the content of state library, I'm sorry, of school library holdings in the state and to begin to start censorship. So we frankly are, I, I think the bill has no cosponsors. I don't think it's going anywhere, but we're concerned about that one. The other bill to bring my short presentation here to a conclusion is the Maryland ebook law. There was a hearing two weeks ago now. And it went on for about three hours. It's in a federal court. The judge is a Maryland resident and turns out to be a Maryland ebook user. And I would say that she's very favorably disposed to what that law does, but has serious concerns about how it would be enforced. Would the state have to be involved with writing contracts on ebooks? And we never imagined that when we put that bill forward. For us, this was a forum for publishers to talk with libraries and not involve state enforcement of contracts. So it's a complicated sort of issue right now. The Association of American Publishers is seeking an injunction against the law saying that whatever the intentions are, that licensing, which is how we get our ebooks, we don't buy them, is governed by copyright, that copyright holders or their representatives, in this case, the publishers, have unlimited rights to that and can do whatever they want. They can license the libraries or not license to libraries. They can charge whatever they want. The only consideration is market forces. And that this is allowed under copyright, which is a federal law, which therefore preempts the Maryland law. The Maryland Attorney General is arguing back that what has happened is that these contracts are unfair and it's not looking at copyright. It is looking at usurious rates, unfair contracts, unfair treatment of libraries. So the judge could grant an injunction against the law, in which case Maryland Attorney General would have two choices. Maryland AG could say, fine, we're going to take the bill back to legislation and have it recrafted to fit into a more consumer-oriented view. And there are now other states that have took, taken the Maryland bill and they are amending it with language that makes it more consumer-oriented. And there's bills now in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Illinois, and Tennessee. The judge, who did say in the hearing that libraries in Maryland have been treated unfairly, could dismiss the AAP matter. Having heard the testimony, I don't think that's going to happen. Our hope in libraries is that she will not grant the injunction and that this will go into discovery and that the publisher is going to have to talk a lot about how much money they make off library ebooks. So that is not settled yet, but other states are involved now. And we think that passage in at least three of those states is going to happen. I will tell you that this has raised major concerns among not only book publishers, but media companies of all kinds and internationally as well as nationally. So European publishers weighing in on this, big media companies, television, movie production studios, music studios, all taking the solid copyright line. Libraries are put against billions of dollars here, and frankly, we have no clout. The only thing that we could do to affect the market force would be to boycott completely the sale, perhaps not only, not only ebooks, but all books until we got a fair deal. We can't do that very well because that's going to disadvantage our users and frankly, undermine our reason for existing. So we'll just have to see where all of this goes. We're playing the long game in libraries. If the Maryland bill does not hold, the other bills will then be coming into effect. And we figure, A, you can't sue them all. And B, what this is indicating is that clearly the copyright laws as they exist now, since the Digital Millennium Copyright Act, are unbalanced for libraries. They do not allow us sustainably to fulfill our fundamental public mission. And we are hoping at some point to see federal legislation that might rebalance that. Could this all end up in the Supreme Court? It might. So I will say that, obviously, as, as the person who kind of suggested this, maybe I have a biased view. I think our state has presented a very strong argument. But I also think that no matter what happens now, we've drawn an incredible amount of attention to a serious problem that libraries have faced for some time. And we can be very proud of our state legislators, who are still strongly in favor of the bill, of our attorney general, who's fulfilling the bill of Maryland residents by fighting for it. And that this is an important step for libraries, no matter what the outcome. So that's it for me. Questions?
I have two. If we go back to the Smurla grant line.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned 20,000. Is that the total grant or is that our portion?
That's just, that's a total grant. Smurla has the grant and it has to disperse the money typically among the three counties equitably is the standard procedure. But our portion of it would pay for the automated collection diversity analysis.
And, and they will do that by electronically looking at our inventory? Is that what's?
Yeah, the, the jobber we have, Ingram, they're the ones we got our books through, have a computer program that basically will take a look at ours and identify areas of strength, areas where we might need to do better. I, I think our collections would, would fare pretty well in any such diversity. I know that the people who buy and the branch managers and Mary and I'll look at that very carefully and try to make sure that we are offering a diverse collection that represents all points of view.
And our guestimated share of the 20 is enough to cover their work?
Yeah, it should. We, you know, $7,000, we think is going to, going to handle without any problem.
And in the line above the Smurla grant, I noticed you didn't talk about that. Can we go back to that one?
Oh, sorry. Yes. I did not deliberately skip over it all, though. When I start telling you what's going on here, you might think I had. In fact, I was advised by some of folks, don't tell them, just wait till we get it all straightened out. For the last 10 years, now we're in perfectly good standing with the IRS. We are a tax-free entity. We have not existed as an entity in the state of Maryland as a library. About 2010, apparently, and I don't know if they just didn't realize they had, and this is, I hesitate, I hasten to point out, well before the time of anybody here who had any say in the matter. You have every year to, to fill in a renewal of your Maryland's sort of tax entity status, and it wasn't done. So we have not for some time, and it hasn't hurt us at all, apparently, but we discovered this when we were working at PNC. this when we were working at PNC and we were telling you that we were doing that and looking at some ways to, you know, possibly get the most and spend the least from our PNC account. And they said, we can't find you. And we said, well, that's ridiculous. Here's our number. And yeah, it didn't exist. So we're in the process right now, we're working with ASKE and ASKE, and we're getting that existence back into effect. We will no longer, according to the state's expired registration, be the St. Mary's County Memorial Library system, will be the St. Mary's County Library. So more on that as we get that back into effect. And I haven't, we're trying to find in all of our past board meetings and all our documentation, any indication of working with the state of Maryland on this, and frankly, there's just nothing there. So I think it slipped somebody's mind and didn't know they needed to do it. And so we're, as I say, we're working to get that reinstated. And it's not really a problem for us right now so much as it's a little embarrassing.
Why would we lose the memorial part of our name?
That happened in 2010, and I wasn't here then, but my understanding is that we no longer considered it necessary part of the name, that we weren't memorializing anything in particular. Mary Ann, you were here then.
I do have to do with the memorial for, so.
Okay. Thank you. And John, thank you for taking me back to that. I did not deliberately skip over it. So we'll let you know when we're officially a state entity again. And as I say, it hasn't caused us any issues for 12 years, but we'd like to make sure that everything's on the up and up.
Is this our EIN? Is that what you're?
No, no, we have, we have an EIN. That's federal. Yeah, we're set with that.
All right. Thank you.
So I do have one thing to ask you to change. It's our materials reconsideration policy. This is what happens when somebody is not happy with something that we own and would like to challenge that. I am pleased to report to you that, knocking on wood again here, we haven't had any challenges in years now. That's unusual in one respect only, in that nationally, the American Library Association is documenting a record number of challenges. It's part of kind of a semi-organized political move in many states. There's a whole list of books that goes around and people say, have you got that book? Have you got that book? We don't like that book. We haven't seen any challenges. But Smurla was developing a policy kind of as a backup in case somebody wanted to challenge something. It was in a database, not owned by one of the county library systems, for example. It might go to them. So they developed a policy, and when they were doing that, they asked to review the three county policies. And it turned out that St. Mary's was different from Charles and County, Charles and Calvert, I'm sorry, counties in one primary way. And that is that when we were having challenges, we would have the branch manager review. And it's a very extended process. The person goes and looks at reviews of the book, looks at its critical reception since its arrival, and makes a decision, looking at the item itself. And sometimes, for example, we have moved a book from the teen area to an adult area or from a children's area to a teen area. That's been more kind of what our response has been. We don't necessarily think there's been anything that's been inappropriate for all readers, but we want to make sure that people's concerns are registered and that we get something into an area we think it best suits readers. What the other counties were doing, instead of just having a branch manager do it, is forming a small committee. And the concern there is that if it looks like one person's doing the reviewing, it may be that, two things. First of all, or it's only one person's point of view, may I please have more? And incidentally, if the person asking for the view is not satisfied, they may bring it to me, and if I give them a response they're not satisfied with, they may bring it for a hearing to you. So there is a procedure in place for how challenges are handled. But the other concern then is that if it's one person, it kind of puts that person out there as the name who is saying something about this book. And having a committee makes it sort of less one person's call, one person's responsibility, one person facing the ire of the public, if you will. So there are a number of changes to the policy, and thank you for Mary Ann for reviewing the policy and going through to make those changes. And that was in your packet, so I would like you to please consider that. The primary change is just to make this a committee that will do the review rather than, rather than just the branch manager. Sure, please do.
It's actually not the policy that's changing, the policy is saying, the procedure is the step. So, and we added in step two, which is to remind, we have something, please come to Libs.
You'll have to use this one if you want to.
That one? I was just pointing out that the procedures is what is being changed, not the actual policy. And we added in step two, which is just reminding the customer that we have something for everyone and that we would be happy to show them what they would like to see. And we were already having a committee review the book, but this just puts it in writing that that's what we had. It wasn't always just the branch manager making the decision. It was a team of people, but the branch manager responded, and we're just changing that slightly. The other change is we, if it does come to the board, we gave you a little bit more time to respond.
I have a couple of questions about this.
Sure.
I have two questions, really. First is if it would be helpful to define more this committee of librarians? If we want to establish parameters of how many people are on there? Is this all people from one branch or people from across the branches? Because I think that, you know, members of the public might raise understandable concerns if that committee of librarians itself varies widely in terms of size or composition. And then my other question is about the language in number five about the committee will read or view the material. When we're looking at the general criteria for selection in the policy itself, we also pay attention to the critical attention and the reputation of the author. And it seems like, as written, the language says that the committee is only looking at the material itself. And I wonder if it might be good to throw in a word like assess to say the committee will assess, read, and/or view the material to show that not only are they looking at the material itself, but also the kind of critical reception and reputation around it.
Um, go ahead.
I stole that paragraph from Calvert's policy, so.
Okay, okay.
I'm happy to make some changes.
So at this point, I will leave it up to you. This is not a, this is not a crucial matter, so we can bring it back next month, having made those changes, or we can hammer some out now. Which would you rather?
I think we'll pass along the next month.
All right, we'll bring this back. And Michael, thank you for bringing those questions forward.
May we send you any editorial comments we have for possible inclusion and review next month?
Well, you know, we show you the policy ahead of time and the public too, for that matter. So if you have comments that you want to make, please, once you see the revised policy, bring them to the meeting itself so that they get the proper consideration under the Open Meeting Act.
Okay, so no editorial comments now?
Oh, you know, you could, no, no, I'm sorry. If that's your question, yes, you may absolutely make comments now.
Okay. This is analogous to comments about the audit, for example. Remember how you asked for, well, this sentence doesn't make any sense, that kind of a thing? That's what I want to get at and get to you before we get a final.
Please do. What exactly is it? And Mary Ann is there with her pen to take notes. What is it that you would like to see or what is it that you think needs changing?
Well, a question under Roman III on page one. Last sentence there in the bulky paragraph, "Materials selected primarily for children and adolescents will be marked accordingly." What exactly does that mean? How will they be marked accordingly?
They're categorized accordingly.
By, so by category, then? Is that what you're driving at? Okay.
Yeah, we have a children's section and a teen section, and then the books there are marked so that they, when they're re-shelled or shelved properly and just put in the right place to begin with.
Okay. On, under the section, "Materials Reconsideration" in Arabic number seven, formerly number five, "The Director Will Apply Within Ten Working Days." I would suggest that that begins with, "If there is an appeal, comma, the director will reply."
I think that makes sense, since if there's not going to be an appeal, then I don't necessarily, as a director, have to reply at all.
And in Arabic eight, formerly six, the second line up from the bottom of that paragraph, "The Board May Then Ask Questions and Conduct a Discussion." Is that a public discussion, private?
No, these would be public, these would be right, these would be in a forum like this, this would be a public forum. Members of the public can apply to address the board, and you have the right to say no, but for materials reconsideration, this is something that would come under your purview and it would be a public hearing, yeah?
Okay. I would think we ought to insert the word "public" to describe the discussion in that sentence. The board meetings are public, and the library is going to conduct a public discussion. Okay? And then on the form itself, you will be contacted by the branch manager regarding, and I would make it your concern.
Michael?
Yes.
Hello? I can't hear a thing.
Sorry, Janice.
I wasn't trying to interrupt.
Yeah, we're still having audio difficulties here.
Yeah.
So John has just suggested a few changes to the wording of the document here and there, and nothing changes the overall import of the document or its statements. It's just some wording here and there. So I think that we'll accept those changes, but we'll be presenting them to you next month.
Okay. I was just concerned that we couldn't hear and I.
Sorry, sorry, Janice. I understand that it's, it's been difficult here. With any luck, the county will have the system straightened out tomorrow, so we all can come and have a wonderful time, wishing Dr. Bridget best. And I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, Janice.
Yes, I'll be here, I'm here.
Well.
By the way, I would ask you.
Back to you.
I would ask that you add a sentence at the end, that no meeting before the board can be conducted until January 2023.
So, Janice, Jim has just suggested that we add a sentence to the saying that no materials may be reconsidered until after he has left the board, so.
By the way, as an aside, I, the board did approve the Smurla policy, which again, indirectly strengthens this policy too.
So our next meeting is March 21st. We are presenting to the county commissioners tomorrow. The county CIP budget session is tomorrow afternoon, and I haven't heard back from Gary Whipple, the interim head of Department of Public Works and Transportation, but we are hoping to get both Charlotte Hall and Lexington Park under consideration for a major redo. It would be five years out, but if we can get even that, then so much the better. The library is closed next Monday, which is why we're meeting here on Valentine's Day. And thank you for your patience coming out on a sort of semi-national holiday. So we do have a meeting tomorrow, virtual meeting with Senator Bailey and/or his aide, and then on Thursday with Delegate Brian Crosby and Delegate Matt Morgan, and it would be Matt Morgan's aide that we are talking with. So looking forward to those conversations. If nothing else, then Jim, take it away.
Well, yeah, actually, two things, and I'll ask any input from the board. One, by the way, in Smurla, because it's relevant to our agenda, the Smurla also agreed to have meetings there every other month, hopefully to aid us in our recruiting new members. But there was another meeting today, actually, with Jack Bailey and Brian Crosby, and again, talking about things that are in legislation or in process or being reviewed, most of which really is not relevant to the library, although there were other things that maybe are, but I was dismayed to hear that they're not going to eliminate the tax on military retiree pay, but. And secondly, you may have seen in the newspapers that there was discussion of having Charles County Library, not Library, the school, so you have to sort of secede from the union. That's unlikely to occur. But one thing I wanted to mention, though, that may have relevance to the library itself is that there is discussion about having paid family medical leave, which again, would provide income for individuals who go out on FMLA leave. Now, this is in discussions, but fundamentally, and there are two bills, actually, but basically they would have payroll deductions to fund this. It's really be similar to unemployment. Again, a lot of details, and they didn't get into a lot of details because it still needs to be reviewed more extensively, but it's something that is being under consideration. So that would have an impact on at least what we have to set up if indeed it does pass through. So that's all I have. Is there anything else that anybody has?
Janice and John, just so you can hear, and Amy, Jim was talking about a session he attended this morning, the Chamber of Commerce, using the library Zoom, thank you, had a meet and greet with our Southern Maryland delegation. And there's a bill that's coming forward that would provide paid leave under FMLA, help people who are on FMLA with money. And if that were to pass, it would affect how we would have to do some budgeting. Basically, there'd be payroll deductions that would be made to begin building that fund. So we already have, for the most part, a pretty generous look at FMLA, although for our part-timers, obviously, it's much more difficult than our full-timers. And we'll, we'll make any adjustments we need to, should that bill pass.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, I'm going to.
I have a question. Michael, last month, the board approved the transfer of that 31,000 to the OPEB account. Has that happened?
Have we done that, Belinda? Yes.
We agreed 30,000.
30,000, yeah.
Has it happened?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't see it either on the December or the January swab statement.
It just happened.
Oh, it just happened? Okay. And then my question for us is, the application of those funds, so it'll go in as cash, how do they know what to do with it? Because we're probably due for a rebalancing anyway.
Why would that fund going in be any different from any money going into the?
Well, I don't know what happens when any money goes in. Do they?
30,000, yeah.
Has it happened?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't see it either on the December or the January swab statement.
It just happened.
Oh, it just happened, okay. And then my question for us is the application of those funds. So it'll go in as cash. How do they know what to do with it? Because we're probably due for a rebalancing anyway.
Why would that fund going in be any different from any money going into the?
Well, I don't know what happens when any money goes in. Do they follow the, what do we call them? The investment policy statement or what do they do?
I don't know. I could find out. But it's, I don't know why that would be anything different than what we're currently doing, but I.
I don't know what we're doing. So my point is if.
What are we doing?
That money goes in and it just sits there, it's not really helping with the growth.
Okay, so what you're saying is if it goes in as cash, it's just going to sit in a cash account?
That's my question, does it, yeah.
Yeah, that's, we can check on that. That's easy to do. It's a valid question because money going in, we don't want it sitting in cash.
Oh, exactly. And lastly, I'd like to correct the record on my understanding of underfunding of the OPEB account. I have learned through two different sources that we are actually allowed to underfund the OPEB account. Okay? And one of those two came from the county attorney's office. The library board of trustees is permitted to be underfunded as long as it is fully funded by the date required and there is a plan to meet current and future obligations for retirement health. Do we have a plan?
Well, and we're not, we're not, we're underfunded, but we're not in arrears. In other words, it's a pay-as-you-go, if need be, to go to that alternative. So once we see, obviously, in our reports we get from our consultant, we see that fund diminishing to a point it's no longer viable, then obviously we'll take some action. But it seems like planning for something that, at this juncture, we don't know if it's ever going to occur. It hasn't so far.
So we don't have a plan?
I don't know. No, we don't.
I think that kind of puts us at peril, then.
John, I don't really want to get into it. You keep talking about us being in peril. Most plans are underfunded. And if we get to the point where that fund diminishes to a stage where we need to really reevaluate it, determine what we need to do, then we'll take the appropriate action at that point. But I don't see any reason to deal with it right now.
Well, I disagree, but we'll let it go for the time being.
Okay. All right, anything else? And if not, the meeting is adjourned.